At this time, we'll go through the meeting before. The behavior during all official meetings shall be consistent with the behavior exercised in any court or legislative room found within the Commonwealth of Virginia. And there shall be no outbursts, booing, heckling, or other forms of disrespectful behavior by any individuals present within these chambers. And persons wishing to speak shall do so respectfully and in accordance with the applicable rules of procedures and/or at the specific direction of the presiding official. However, there is, just a reminder, there is no public comment tonight. Out of respect for the official business being conducted, for those conducting the official business and for those present for the same purpose, there shall be no private conversations taking place in the audience or other forms of destructive behavior or nuisance. And we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and any other such devices. Now, each one of the commission members should have before you the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as is? So we'll have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Have a second. All in favor, let it be known with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Moves us right along into the new business workshop with the Berkeley Group. We'll turn it over to staff at this time and let her get us started.
Good evening. Glad everyone can be here with us tonight. We are in the process tonight is a special call meeting. We do have Michael Zainer with the Berkeley Group with us tonight. And he's been working very hard to get us where we are this evening. Currently before us tonight, we have our addendum for the policies to the Conference of Plan Regarding Renewable Energy Facilities. In addition to the zoning text, all of this amendments and things that we have discussion on tonight will be based on the resolution that the Board of Supervisors adopted on May the 7th. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear. So I have with us tonight seven of our Planning Commission members. We do have a quorum if there's any reason that we need to move forward with any kind of approval process. I don't really have anything else to discuss. I'm just gonna let you lead where we are and what you're, what we need to look at and what you have proposed based on that resolution. Where do you want to start at? Do you want to start with policy or do you want to start with zoning text?
You're asking me to?
I'm asking you. Yes, sir.
Let's start with the policy. And I can share my screen as well, so let me do that. And I sent this to Ms. Black earlier, so hopefully you all have had it. And just so you know, this is, you know, I think the purpose of this meeting, one, just to familiarize you all with what these edits would likely look like and get your input as well. So when we come back next week for the actual public hearing, you have these documents in closer to final form. So this is what I did here is took the proposed policy amendments to the Conference of Plan that you all last saw, that you made a recommendation of support for and that the Board of Supervisors saw. And then I modified them consistent with the discussion at the joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Board and the subsequent resolution that the Board issued last week. So generally minimal changes to the policy that I see as necessary. Of course, it starts out with the overarching policy on utility scale renewable energy facilities. And the changes I made here was just inserted some language here. I think all of this is still relevant because it talks about solar and wind in the context of what's occurring in Virginia. So this paragraph at the bottom of the first page, I've indicated more kin and form to industrial development than traditional agricultural uses. Historically seen in more rural areas of the county, it will be necessary to consider the appropriateness of these uses, along with the size, scale, design, and sighting of these uses if allowed. And the sentence continues on. And then down below under general land use strategies for renewable energy, the second bullet I struck, wind development principally because of the Board's direction that either the policies or the zoning ordinance amendments support utility scale wind. So I struck wind development and it now just reads balance the opportunities and impacts of the future of renewable energy and specifically utility scale solar. And then added a new third bullet that really drives it all. At this time, utility scale wind facilities are not considered an appropriate land use in the county, given their potential impacts on adjacent and nearby uses, the county's natural resources, and important dew sheds, and should therefore be prohibited. The solar facility language remains unchanged. And then down below, where we had specific policy language on utility scale wind facilities, really I struck everything after this point. So there would be no specific policies because generally they would, those policies that we drafted would support wind being allowed use. And instead, I just ended this first paragraph with based upon these potential impacts, utility scale wind facilities are not considered an appropriate land use in the county and should therefore be prohibited. So these are all the changes I could envision minimally being necessary to the policy. And really, the major focus is clarifying from a policy standpoint that the Conference Plan would not support the utility scale wind facility use. So I'm happy to answer any questions and, you know, share your feedback if there are no questions and we can work to incorporate that in to the draft and bring that back to you next week.
The one thing that I did catch, 14-24, under future land use considerations, there's verbiage in there that needs to be struck, wind sighting.
Okay.
Based on the map. We struck wind.
Yes.
Catch that one?
Thank you for that. That was one thing on the map.
I noticed you struck that.
Yeah, but I need to change the letter. So yes, thank you for that.
The other thing that I wanted to ask the Commission about prior to this meeting, I had actually sent the Agricultural Advisory Committee's information over. I know we didn't get, we didn't discuss that, me and you, the other day, but I did send it for consideration to the Planning Commission. And I did receive word back from the Chairman that he wanted to just kind of leave it as is. But there's one thing that when I met with the committee that really struck me, that we, I feel that we need to consider, is based on Grayson County's land here within, I think the way that the forest conservation values from the Virginia Department of, or DCR, the conservation, it was spelled out to me by that committee that we really needed to capture class three in addition to four and five. And incorporate that into the policy because it was conducive, or these specific land values were conducive for Grayson County, not just four and five. So they asked us to consider that based on that particular map. What does the planning commission think in regards to that? I don't have the ability to share that particular map with you. It is one of the policy number seven. Under facilities, should avoid development in areas of forest conservation values or ecological cores rated high to outstanding as defined by the DCR and other equivalent state departments.
And I would just add, I don't, I don't think that we have any issues with that suggestion.
The way I understood it was this would be better suited for our sole types here. That particular map was an overarching of the whole entire state.
Was that number seven or number eight?
Number seven, I believe. My apologies. It is number eight. No wonder everybody's lost.
So what we're looking at is adding class three also?
Yep. To our sole suitability, deciding purposes of any solar.
I don't have a problem with that. Commission, you all got a problem with it? So we're gonna add class three?
He will add that in, Michael, class three souls. I know there were several other things that they wanted us to consider, but we can do that when we have some more time to discuss some of those. I just felt that class three was irrelevant to what we needed to have in there right now. The other things were the word dwindling in the first paragraph of utility scale facilities. The committee basically did not agree with the word dwindling. Their comments were that they recognize the opportunities of landowners have to generate additional revenue via such projects on their property. Agricultural economic data does not support dwindling revenues for farms and forestry activities. Agricultural and forestry go through periods of ever-changing revenues that can differ from sector and overtime. The committee suggests omitting this statement from the justification.
Yeah, and I might suggest just striking the word dwindling rather than the entire sentence.
Where's that again?
Michael, can you pull that up?
Yeah, I'll share this. Yep. So this is on the second page. And it's in this paragraph or sentence here. So certainly, property purchase and lease payments to property owners have been aimed to meet and supplement, if not surpass, dwindling revenues, but we can change it to just revenues from agricultural and forestry activities and increased tax revenues from projects can be used to address public funding gap absent in cost increases.
Commission, any issues with struck and dwindling?
And I would say certainly you can.
Everybody struck it dwindling.
I'm sorry, Michael.
No, I would just say you can, we can certainly put that in the draft and if people think differently about it when we come back next week, you can go in a different direction as well.
The other suggestion from the committee was to omit ecological cores for both solar and wind as they are not well-defined or existing in Grayson County. Can you explain to the commission a little bit about that, the ecological cores? Can you define what that term means?
Yeah, let's, let me bring up another map. Bear with me one thing, one second. I'll get right there. So similar to forest conservation values, ecological cores is a rating established by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. And we generally refer to, they have what's called a Natural Heritage Data Explorer. And I'll open it up in a second and show you. And I'll read exactly what the term means. Bear with me one more minute. Let me share my screen for a second. So here is what ecological cores map looks like for the county. I'll zoom in a little bit better. So the red, there are no red areas that I can see. Ecological cores would be considered outstanding. Orange would be very high. Yellow, high. Lighter green, moderate, and darker green, general. And what we've said here is that facilities should avoid development of areas of ecological cores rated high to outstanding as defined by Virginia DCR. So really, it would be orange areas that would be the most relevant to projects. And these are going to be on higher elevations and ridge lines in the county. So they are present, but likely not overly impactful to the sighting of solar facilities. And trying, oh, here we go. So ecological cores is basically they use land cover data, identify large unfragmented cores, which are patches of natural land with at least 100 acres of interior cover. Cores provide habitat for a wide range of species from Interior Department forest species to habitat generalists, as well as four species that utilize Martian maritime habitats. The cores later represents cores as polygons that are symbolized by ecological integrity scores. Maintaining vital natural landscapes is essential for basic ecosystem services such as cleaning out air and filtering out water. I won't read this entirely, but I would tell you from a practical standpoint, it's been helpful to look at these ratings when we're looking at individual projects. And from an ecological core standpoint, you know, it may be that a project is not disturbing lands that have a very high or outstanding classification. But it could be that the design of the project warrants some consideration for connecting areas that have those very high or outstanding ratings. And I think the policy is not set in stone. It's drafted in a flexible way so that facilities should avoid development of those areas. It's not mandating that they have to avoid development of those areas. But if there ever were a project that significantly impacted ecological cores as demonstrated on the map, then that project may warrant some greater evaluation in terms of how it impacts those areas and what could be done to mitigate those impacts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems a lot similar to our green infrastructure laws.
Similar.
In which we did take into consideration.
How's the planning commission think? Remove it or leave it?
Leave it.
Lisa, Charlie?
It's about the same as what they're doing. I just leave it.
All right, leave it alone.
Leave it as it is.
All right.
We need an official vote on that. Anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Sure, make sure.
That was the only couple of things that I wanted to pick apart. Other than E, which was the solar farm, solar facility, when we get to the text. And I see where you have it highlighted. I think it's just a word change.
Now, did anything change in this concerning the ridge tops?
The only thing that was added in this particular policy, it is my understanding, Michael, you can clearly, or tell me I'm wrong, was that they, the Board of Supervisors wanted to preclude wind development. And so he added in that third bullet under general land use strategies for renewable energy that that particular wind utility scale facilities are not considered an appropriate land use and that they are prohibited. That would be the only thing that they would have added in this particular policy. In regards to the overlay that we, and Michael, I'm just going to explain what happened here in regards to the overlay. The advertisement I had placed in the paper as a placeholder did not reference the overlay of ridge development. We're including this policy here now. This will protect that until that time that we can get that overlay, that map, that. That's a lot to ask of the planning commission. Michael, a week is all we have. So we got this part done, which protects, in my mind, it protects the ridge lines. We will come back, re-advertise for a ridge development and an overlay map next month. But for now, we're adding the policy, striking the text. Does that clear that up, Michael?
Yeah, I think so. And it's, you know, your ordinance, as far as I'm aware, you don't currently have any overlays in districts. So we'll actually need to create provision. And I think it's something that is worth a little bit of extra time to make sure it's done correctly. And I do believe that these changes to the common plan, but also the changes to the zoning ordinance, just that, that will be, that we're talking about tonight and will be on your agenda next week, I think, address the concerns head on. And I think the other provisions would be a little bit of belt and suspenders, but happy to work on those as well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I think like the Board of Supervisors were pretty adamant about protecting the ridge line.
And we will.
Just wanted to make sure we.
And as he addressed, it's going to take some time to get that overlay. In your email that Michael shared with me that I forwarded to the Planning Commission, there is state code in there and there are two ordinances and an overlay map for your consideration. Review that. It is Floyd County and Bluefield, the town of Bluefield. They have an overlay map and Floyd actually has a ordinance. So we will be considering. Michael, based off of what you have researched, are we going to be doing an ordinance for ridge top by itself or in an overlay? Or are we going to come back and amend all this text again?
No, I think this can stand on its own. You know, the policy and the zoning ordinance provisions for solar and what we've tweaked it for wind, those can stand on its own. The ridge top, as I anticipate, it will be kind of structured, would be a, in an overlay zoning district that ideally you would map it, but you can probably just apply it to the elevation point so that the district, you would ideally again map that visually, but the district would be based upon the elevation of property relative to sea level. I think it's 2,000.
1,000, correct.
Yeah, and I noticed, I believe, one of the examples, I can't remember if it was Bluefield, Bluefield or Floyd, I think they said it at 3,000, but essentially the limits or the applicability of the district would be tied to that elevation point. It works in a similar way to floodplain ordinance where the floodplain ordinance is essentially an overlay zoning district that is tied to the base flood elevation. So it kind of works in a similar fashion, but on the other end of the spectrum.
Under general land use strategies for renewable energy, that third bullet, where it says at the end, and should therefore be prohibited, should be changed to shall?
Well, remember, this is policy, so it's not law. So it could say shall, but commonly we use should, may, not definitive shall. But I think, I think either one is appropriate, but as you'll see when I go through the ordinance, it's definitively prohibited.
With the ridge tops, is that relative to the wind and solar or one of those?
No, I think ridge top development is more applicable to the wind. I've not seen any ridge top solar development. Not that it couldn't occur, but even still, the way the ridge top ordinance provision works or the statute provision works in the state. or the statute provision works in the state statutes, the ridge top protection deals with tall structures, whereas, you know, basically structures that are 40 feet in height and greater, which would not be solar development.
So with the, if we go with 2,000 foot, then that's basically the shall. Because like here in Penn, it was 2200 or 3 is a rainbow, thanks.
Is the objective to prohibit the large-scale apartment development, like in that city over in North Carolina? So you're down in the city, you look up the ridge tops, and there are multi-story apartment dwellings?
I believe that overlay would prohibit that as well.
You said that would be the next meeting, right?
Yeah, and we'll be working on that information followed in the G.
Right. Going back to that third bullet under General Land Use Strategies for Renewable Energy, to me, it just seems like leaving should leaves a gray area to myself. Now, I would feel better if we put shall. It'd make it more definitive with that one sentence. But it's a commission's decision. I just don't like to use too much ground. It's kind of like this. What's y'all's thoughts?
Yeah, he does pinpoint a little.
Very good. And to put it all in perspective, I'll read it here. At this time, utility scale wind facilities are not considered an appropriate land use in the county, given their potential impacts on adjacent and nearby uses, the county's natural resources, and important view sheds, and should therefore be prohibited. Myself, from what the board supervisors told me, they were willing. We should simply change should to shall, define it, it's not allowed. Not leave any gray area whatsoever. That's just me. It's a commission's decision.
Make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion. We change the should to shall. Oh, Mr. Blake, we let you take it. Okay, then I'll make the motion. He's up to the board supervisors in the Indian way.
All right, Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
Special Carries, Michael, would you strike should and make the shall?
I've already done.
Thank you, sir.
It's on top of it.
If you want, I can, I can, unless there are any other comments on the policy, I can walk you through what I've done to the ordinance amendments, to the zoning ordinance.
Commissioner, give the policy.
Commissioner, anything else?
Well, I was just going to speak with the, so, with Bluefield and Floyd, you know, I think we're talking about that overlay next month, right?
Yes, sir. We're going to overlay and ridge top. The ridge top overlay.
But what they, but what they have in place is what? An example of what we would like, probably what we would like to do.
I would encourage you to read it and get familiar with it before we start working on it.
So what is it to stop solar panels from?
There's nothing.
I didn't hear what you said exactly. Can you make a stop with solar panels?
Other than we do a 2232 review as part of this policy. And that, you know, comes up with a, you know, a suggestion that maybe we should consider not creating it based on the general welfare and the rural character of that particular parcel. As a planning commission, you have the right to deny a special use for wind based on those things. And there's, and I can give you, I can give you the code language for denial. And I will send that to you in an email after we get done here, where you didn't consider it. I mean, those are the, those are the factors in what you should know when you hear and receive a consideration of special use for wind.
So we can either accept it or deny it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So why would, I mean, what would make the, put shall on it also?
Help me, Michael, here.
Which, which bullet are we talking about?
They, they.
Solar on ridge tops.
Solar on the ridge tops.
You said you've never had it, but it could happen. And if the county's not willing, no.
So I would tell you, I would tell you this. So if you all were presented with an application and we were helping review that, what I would do is refer to, under Future Land Use Considerations for Solar, the third policy statement is scenic view sheds and vistas are important recreational and economic resources for the county, and the location and design of the shall not detract from existing value aesthetics or rural character of view sheds or vistas. And I think we would evaluate whether or not that proposal on ridge top would detract from any of those things. And I'm pretty confident to say that it would be a simple, easy finding to determine that it was negative in that, in that way. But I think it's also important to consider that the map that's part of the policy that spatially presents areas that would be eligible for solar projects. And I believe it avoids many of the prominent ridge lines within the county. You know, it's got to be still within close proximity to transmission line corridors, has to avoid and be located in certain zoning areas. So I think a lot of those concerns are covered in multiple different ways.
Thank you.
So you satisfied with that? We need to add a double minute, that would be, it's time to do it.
Yeah, and again, if you all, if we all want to think about that, too, it can be something that can be included in there as part of a recommendation next week as well. But it's a good, it is a good thought. Let me share my screen and I'll walk you through the zoning ordinance amendment. So this is the version of the ordinance that went to the Board of Supervisors as well. And it's probably not formatted exactly as it needs to be, but the reded marks are track change edits. And what I tried to do was principally strike everything that pertained to an allowance for utility scale wind. Some of it I had to separate out, how we dealt with solar and wind, because when we drafted these, they were kind of dealt with jointly. And so I'll kind of show you what I, what I did, separated it out. I will tell you, I did keep accessory wind as an allowed use. So, and I'll show you, the current, the zoning districts that we had always allowed accessory wind in, those remain the same, but that is the only wind facility use that's called out as being allowed. And those are limited to 100 feet or less than 100 feet and a rated capacity of 100 kilowatts, which I believe is, is what is allowed today for utility scale or not utility scale for accessory wind. So I didn't change that. I did strike some of these terms because they really have no relevance to accessory wind. I kept others like rated capacity and mat tower, only because mat tower is used within the definition of tower. It's not to imply that any of these things are allowed. Same with utility scale wind energy. While we've specified that it's a prohibited use, I thought it would be helpful to still have the definition so you understood the distinction between what was allowed in terms of accessory wind versus what was prohibited in terms of utility scale wind. And then wind turbine, wind turbine height are still relevant terms. Did some cleanup here for consistent terminology spanned out and kind of have separate subsections for each of these types of uses. So these are the original strikes that were proposed. Hydro powers listed, combustion units as they are today. And then what I've done here is I've kept everything pertaining to solar energy, but struck everything pertaining to wind energy. So I won't kind of go into this in great detail because it's all continues to be relevant for solar. I did, yeah, so anything you see struck here should be applicable only to wind. I did add a provision about damaged equipment and storage of damaged equipment because that was a point of discussion. So here are the application amendments, and all of these were specific to wind. Minimum development standards for solar, those are largely unchanged or unchanged at all. And so then you have minimum development standards for wind energy. And those were really principally applicable to utility scale. So I've struck all of those. And then instruction, operational, decommissioning requirements, just applicable to solar energy. Again, struck everything applicable to wind. I added this provision. So I struck signal interference, which is only applicable to wind, and added this provision. This is a condition, I think I had talked about at the joint meeting, that we commonly deal with this through a condition. But essentially, it says all physically damaged panels or any portion of or debris thereof shall be collected by the facility operator and removed from the site or stored on site in a location protected from weather and wildlife and from any contact with ground or water. Until removal from the site from year range, storage of damaged panels or portion or debris thereof shall not exceed 30 days beyond any required period for insurance, warranty claim, or in the event of force majeure, for which reasonable documentation shall be submitted to and approved by the zoning administrator. For purposes of foregoing force majeure, shall be defined to include strikes, lockouts, or other labor disturbances, inability to secure labor or materials in the open market, acts of God, or other element of nature, or accidents, delays, or conditions arising from or relating to acts of war, domestic or international terrorism, pandemics, civil disturbance, or riots, or any other matter or condition that is beyond your reasonable anticipation and control of the applicant. Some of that's probably a little too much, as you might imagine. An attorney did suggest some of this language. I can see perhaps striking the entire last sentence altogether, but I wanted to make sure you saw exactly what we commonly propose as a condition instead as a regulation. And then leaving that piece, what I've done is, so similar to hydro and combustion and solar, I created now a separate section for wind energy, where it just says that accessory wind facilities that are accessory to a principal use of a property are permitted either by right or subject to a special use permit as specified within the applicable zoning districts. In Article Four, utility scale wind energy systems or any wind energy generating facility constituting a principal use of property are prohibited in all zoning districts. So that is essentially what you would rely on as a prohibition statement for that use for utility scale wind. And then I had to clean up some provisions of communication tower. And then in Article Four, this clarifies that accessory wind facilities in accordance with Section 314, that they are only allowed in the rural farm, rural residential, commercial district, industrial district, and service district. Let's strike that. And then I struck the last part of that, which was the allowance for utility scale wind, that that was allowed to use subject to a special use permit in the rural farm district. So that goes away entirely. And that, that's really it. You know, I want to go back through this as thoroughly as I can just to make sure that everything's been addressed before next week. But I think those changes should address what I heard from, from the commission and the board of supervisors.
I've got a couple of questions. A accessory wind facility, the wind turbine height less than 100 feet and rated capacity less than 100 KW. So thinking about the ridge overlay, something like this as a accessory use to a principal structure, which would be a residential structure, and they want to put in a turbine, would that be precluded there over whatever the planning commission decides on elevation to be determined?
Um, yes, it would probably be prohibited in the ridge line overlay based on how I know it's constructed. But I would tell you, it's my understanding that smaller turbines like this don't necessarily have to be mounted at elevation.
Okay. Because when I was thinking about it, I was going back to our survey that we did, and you had a really nice representation of what each turbine looked like in height in comparison to the Statue of Liberty and the Washington Monument and that sort of thing. And so I think I had it in my, in my head that, yes, that. That one at point one would be 40 feet, maybe? Maybe 59 feet? Pops.
Right here?
Yeah, the smallest one there. But we would, it would be point one, would it not, 100?
So that one's at 89 feet, and I'd have to do the calculation. I think you're right there, Jada.
So I was just thinking that, you know, thinking of as it being an accessory to the principal home. So I was just thinking that, you know, thinking of uh as it being an accessory to the principal home. Would it be, you know, my concern was would it be an allowed by right if it was hitting at that elevation?
So if if there were a mountain ridge top overlay that precluded. Structures greater than forty feet in height. And someone had a dwelling and they wanted to do an accessory. Wind turbine at a hundred feet in height and no greater, then yes, it would be precluded.
Okay.
Along the ridge top.
Wanted to just make sure that I understood. And knew how the enforcement process was gonna work.
Yep.
Thank you. The other question again, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. No, I was just gonna say i- it's important to mention, I mean, we don't, you don't have to allow for accessory wind at all. You can preclude it all of it entirely if you want.
I'll let you all think about that one. Um I I know that Supervisor Hatch was really adamant about disposal of those panels. Um what you have proposed on that to the three point six six? Is that is that what you came up with about uh disposal panel disposal?
It it is, we. So i- it is a typical condition that we come up with in terms of. The the disposal or the, I guess, the removal of of panels that are damaged. I I don't know. Um beyond that. Maybe what the concern is, is there a concern that they cannot or should not be disposed of in the county?
I I I think that's what he was alluding to.
I I would not. I would not deal with that in the ordinance. Um for a couple of reasons, I think it probably goes beyond. Um. The, for me, I I think it goes beyond what the zoning ordinance should dictate or control. Um. That being said, I think it's something that could be addressed with consideration of individual permits. Um no, it's a valid question to an applicant. I would say, you know, if if they have damaged equipment, where and how do they intend to dispose of it? And. I I think I would wonder whether or not there are any. Uh landfills or. You know, haulers or or what have you that have the ability to receive some of that equipment even. Um so that that's just something I would wanna. Maybe look into a little bit further, but I don't know that I would address. Um I'd address it more in the permit than I would uh in the zoning ordinance.
Maybe through conditions?
Yeah, I mean, the challenge is is that. Let's say you put a provision in there, right, and through the conditions, let's say you put a provision in in the zoning ordinance that says. That equipment shall not be disposed of in Grayson County. Um do you? Does does everyone who would um be subject to that requirement, are they properly aware that they are subject to that requirement? That they can't receive certain uh, you know, damaged equipment, disused equipment, what have you? Uh you know, they they are subject to certain certifications on on the types of things that they can receive and dispose of. And that may be a better way to handle it. But um I can certainly think about that more.
Thank you.
Going back to the accessory wind facility, any thoughts from the commission? We'll leave it, we'll go away with it. Would windmills be uh? In that overlay?
Could we do? As far as the ridge tops, if we're gonna go with proposal of. No large scale, period. Could we do an overlay if we're gonna talk about ridge tops up just for personal use?
It's like I was saying, because this sets up like a windmill, you know, right?
If Farmer John wants to power his barn or.
Put water above.
Whatever, put a sixty foot windmill, I don't feel like they should be stripped of that, right?
That's what I was gonna get to.
And if, well. Because my my first question is gonna be if we. If the proposal's to do with no no turbines, there would be no reason for a ridge cap, right?
Right.
And I mean, that just leaves a gray area. So if we do a ridge cap, could it be for? Windmills, personal use?
Michael, I'm looking to you for guidance on this because I'm at a loss.
So I don't know that I heard some of the comments totally, but um is there a particular question?
I I'll do my best to um sum this up. So. How can we? How can we not preclude Farmer John from using a? Windmill to power his barn or his well? Um is there a way to actually? Preclude the u- utility scale but not the windmills? We need to define the difference between windmill and wind turbines is, I think.
And is that accessory? I mean, is that a? When you go accessory, does that cut it down to a windmill or can a turbine be an accessory? Is there a?
I think in zoning, accessory is an accessory usually to the principal. And principal is usually defined as a home.
Well, or or an ag use.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so so in the in the scenario you define. Then i- if if there is a. A facility that utilizes wind to produce power. It it is defined as a accessory wind facility.
Okay.
And then you can have that in conjunction with any other principal use. So you could have that in conjunction with a farm under under this, these changes. That would be allowed as long as that. Windmill or turbine didn't have a total height greater than a hundred feet and no more output than a hundred uh kilowatts. Then that would be allowed.
When it comes down to it, uh. If I've read correctly, it takes a turbine to actually generate the electricity. And a windmill is not capable of that. Is that correct?
That that's my understanding. I think, you know, um. I think technically speaking, a windmill is not necessarily, you know, for energy production. So so the turbine is is going to have the components that allow for the for the energy generation. Plus other components associated with it.
And what does a windmill do?
Well, a windmill.
Pump water, mills.
Grinding mill.
I think that's where the difference is. The turbine actually generates that electricity. So. When we look at what we've got with the accessory wind facility. Um less than a hundred feet, less than a hundred kilowatts. And that map that he brought up on the sizes, it seems like that would only permit the smallest one.
If if I do the math correctly, I believe it's like fifty nine feet on a. On a hundred uh hundred feet, or excuse me, um a hundred KW.
So a fifty nine foot tall turbine will create that?
That's because I was, when I read that this evening, it just, it struck me thinking about the overlay. Is that gonna preclude? A residential use? I mean, if they wanted to use that or or the the farm rate, I was concerned about that. And so. I was concerned about that overlay, um. You know, um.
So the question would be, then we put a cap, do we use an elevation cap on?
Well.
Residential.
If in the overlay, you can, you can, you could spell out that. It doesn't preclude accessory wind turbines. And you could put that in there. If that's the goal, if 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 the. Commission and the board are not concerned about accessory, that's, you know, no greater than a hundred feet in height regardless of where it is, you you could make that carve out for that.
I don't think we want to prohibit that accessory. That's what you're saying. Plus, we should still put a layer on that.
Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, if you don't want them on the very, very top of um the ridge lines, then yeah, we could probably cap that. Just needed, we just need to figure out what we're allowing and not allowing here and what we think that the board would be comfortable with.
Can you bring that map up one more time of the different sizes? Take a look at it.
It really does help that they see the perspective when you can.
So it's a six, up to that.
Yeah, so. So what's that side of the blade? Eighty eighty nine, I guess ninety eight, ninety eight feet is the is the top of the, between the top of the blade.
That is my understanding that that is from the elevation to the very top of the blade.
Okay. Okay. So with our accessory wind facility or whatever, when we say one hundred feet, is that to the top of the blade?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From the elevation on the ground to the very tip top of the blade that's extended.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
So in that case, if that says ninety eight feet, is that what that says?
Yeah.
Um you could put a point, well. It would, it could, you could potentially put a point two megawatt turbine.
Well, that the, you were right, or you were right earlier um that a hundred kilowatts would equal zero point one megawatt. So it would likely be, I mean, it. I don't know that you wouldn't end up with a turbine that's still a hundred feet in height to the tip of the the blade. At its highest point, but it just couldn't exceed um point two mega, or excuse me, point one megawatt, which is.
So it'd be either or. Could be either or.
Either or, has to be less than a hundred feet and less than a hundred kilowatt.
Right.
So. So that would prevent Farmer John from having. Needing one to power his milking facilities and.
Milk, still couldn't go on with that, but he could, right, he could have.
Could you have more than one? Tie them together?
So what's wrong with the revelation we've been talking about all along? Hundred feet and less than a megawatt.
What do you mean one?
As long as the elevation's yet, don't worry about it. So we're we're kind of looking ahead at ridge line also is what we were looking at too. Just trying to put it into perspective what we're getting to here.
And I mean, if if we go with, you can have your personal. And then we do totally away with the utility scale, there's no point in the, with that.
So are we trying to prohibit uh a hundred feet of height? Or about now? Let's say somebody builds a nice home up there, wants a an accessory facility that pump water.
Okay, over a hundred.
And we say you can't go over a hundred. What else do we need? Are you gonna say, because it's a ridge line, you can't have it? It's not the same issue problem that you have with utility scale windmills. I don't think we should get, I don't think we should get carried away with restriction, 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 right?
But you also gotta think about what Jada just mentioned. Are we gonna limit them to one? If we don't, if we don't limit them, but it has several.
Well, the the hundred is enough to power all.
Right.
Accessory building.
Am I thinking clearly on this, Michael? If a homeowner wanted to put two there or three there. It couldn't exceed more than a hundred kilowatts. Correct?
Let me, let me think about that.
Okay.
Well, it does say rated capacity less than a hundred kilowatt along with supporting equipment. The facility being an accessory use to the principal use of the property. Supporting equipment only includes turbines, towers, controllers, inverters, grounding systems, foundations, and energy storage systems. So if we wanted to. We can simply put a statement in there such as. At no time will any accessory wind facility exceed one wind turbine. If that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I think, I I don't know that I would put it in the definition. I probably would put it. Um. Under that new section three dash fourteen point four. And and specify that, you know. Uh accessory wind facilities shall consist of no more than one. One tower turbine combined. Or not, you know, it's it's really up to you, but I think um I I think it is something to to address. Right now, I can read it both ways.
Back on page thirty three. Is where that new?
What's the commission time?
One.
Limit to one?
Was you saying that a hundred watts would fit a home? That's correct. How much more would it?
He could power his house, but he couldn't milk his cows. That's that's what I was getting at. You know, so do you limit to one or do you limit to a certain amount of wattage?
I was thinking, I was talking about solar when we. Put that up.
It's fifty KW is what we have.
It would power more than just a home.
Yeah.
That's why a hoyer, I think, would. Would power anything that one person would need on his property. That was with solar, that was fifty. Said it would power all, what was it, twenty five hundred square foot plus uh a garage and maybe other stuff. So this would be double that. But that's something I need to.
I started saying we're not on the.
That's true, it's text time anyway.
Well, no, we need to get it chored up here.
Oh, okay.
I would like to anyway.
You are, who's doing?
I quit.
We said three dash fourteen point four.
Right, it's on page thirty three if you're looking at the text.
Right, so right now, what it reads is three dash, it's three dash one four point four. Wind energy generating facilities. Accessory wind facilities that are accessory to a principal use of a property are permitted either by right or subject to a special use permit as specified within the applicable zoning districts in Article Four. Utility scale and utility scale wind energy systems or any wind generating, energy generating facility constituted in principle use of property are prohibited in all zoning districts. Principal use of property. So, accessory wind, do we, do we want to spell it out, limit it to one? Under a hundred feet, which is defined as that, under a hundred feet, less than a hundred kilowatts. Accessory wind facilities that are accessory to principal use of property are permitted either by right or subject to special use permit. Okay, we can prevent it. It's permitted, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's permitted right there. But the question lies, do we want to spell it out that they're only permitted one? To prevent it from trying to tie them together or whatever is, is mentioned? Or leave it as is, they can't exceed the hundred feet, hundred kilowatt? What?
How many kilowatts would a hundred foot, could I have? It's out, thirty. I may need two.
Who's your helper?
This is, uh, Ruby.
Hi, Ruby.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Entertainment, this is kind of dry.
Yeah, that is a good question, what does a hundred foot produce?
Michael, can you?
I will need to get back to.
That's just the stuff that I don't, I can't. So, are you on it? She's my Googler, are you on it?
I, I can't remember if we, um, addressed that in our original report, but I can, I can go back and see if that was the case.
Might depend on the technology and the generator that comes with it.
Five to fifteen kilowatts to do power a home.
So, that'll. I power, can we even do it?
Typical home uses approximately ten thousand six hundred forty nine kilowatt hours. An average of eight hundred and seventy seven kilowatt hours per month. Depending on the average wind speed, so all those variables come into play.
Yeah, it said they need one point five kilowatt wind turbine when we can use of a home requiring three hundred kilowatt hours per month in a location with a fourteen mile per hour annual average wind speed.
So. So, with accessory, leave as is, or do we want to put a limitation on the amount? Don't we have an limitation on the amount?
A hundred kilowatt.
Hundred feet, hundred kilowatts.
Yeah.
Let's leave it as is. We all fine.
I think we leave it, because. Said if it took two to make a hundred, we still limit it to a hundred. If one makes a hundred, you, you're running it.
One hundred, yeah.
Correct.
So. Good. But it's a consensus, that's what we're leaving as, the way it's written around now. So.
I just see things, I guess, a little bit differently, I just can see. The circumventing of the ordinance is how it reads in my head, just. I'm not extremely sure, I'm sorry. I would like it just clearly defined. Yeah.
Yeah. By it where?
Because I'll have to be the one that makes that interpretation.
I started saying, I mean, it's all for our benefit.
Oh.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Leave it.
We can leave it, we can put no more than two.
I'll take it to the BCA, let them make the interpretation.
Okay, we'll do that. So. Where are we? I thought we'd sent it.
Yeah, we're done. Michael, we're gonna leave it.
Just talk.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, of course, again, if anyone has a change of mind between now and next Tuesday, um, or excuse me, yeah, now and next Tuesday, something we can revisit.
Um, transmission lines on three point four one two. It was picked up by the ad committee that any new electrical transmission line associated with a solar farm be changed to facility. We are referring to everything as a facility, not a farm, just a typo, is that okay that we change that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know you all got it just today, just a few hours before the meeting, so I would encourage you all to just go through and, those are some of the things that I picked up, just looking at it this evening. While they haven't changed, other than just striking all of the wind, um, and adding in the new language on the three point four, three fourteen point four. And then the other one was the pale disposal that we discussed on, uh, three point six six.
Yeah, and I do anticipate when, when we draft it to, to come back to you next week, that it'll be an entirely clean version, so everything that's, you know, struck in red, uh, would be omitted entirely. We can, we can provide something that just shows a comparison between, um, the original and, and then what would be the new proposed ordinance amendments. Um, but you'll have a clean version as well, so it'll hopefully be a little bit easier to follow.
And. You had mentioned something about a new, uh, resolution for the conference plan, and we will need to do that as well.
Correct.
Right, public here. Okay.
Could, uh, could you elaborate on the, uh, General Assembly proposal, for the state with mandate that Chinese could not prohibit it, Matt Wilson?
Yes, so, let me recollect what the bill number was, bear with me one second. So. There were really two bills, or there were House and Senate bill versions of, of two bills. So. The first was, um, I'm just making sure I have the numbers right. So, HB six thirty six and SB five sixty seven. Essentially the same legislation, one being the House bill and the other the Senate bill. These projects with a rated generation capacity of fifty megawatts or more for solar, or wind projects of a hundred megawatts or more, and battery energy storage projects of fifty megawatts or more. And they would have required localities to establish what's called a compatible ordinance, that was defined in this, the legislation, that allowed for the development of these types of energy facilities within the locality, with requirements which are no more restrictive than the provisions of the bill, and they had criteria in the bill. If, if a locality had a moratorium, if they're, or if they prohibited those uses, then the look, I'll consider this to not have a, a compatible old energy ordinance. And, um, so you essentially would have had to allow fifty megawatts of solar or facilities with fifty megawatts or more solar, and wind facilities of a hundred megawatts or more. If the locality fails to act on, failed to act on an application within a specified time, or if you denied the application, and the applicant could appeal, uh, and apply for approval of that project from the State Corporation Commission, and the State Corporation Commission could overrule the locality's denial. There's some other aspects of that, um, including expanding the siting agreement provision to apply to wind. So, there's, those two bills, they, they, you know, the biggest thing there is they really would have established what the criteria would be for locality review of projects, and created a mechanism to, to get approval of those projects out of all side of the localities if, if an applicant felt like, um, they, they, they had a, had a legitimate project that would otherwise, you know, be approved. Then there was SB six ninety seven. And this bill would have added a part G to section fifteen point two dash twenty two eighty eight point seven of the state statutes, and that would have read that no local ordinance shall include limits on the total amount, density, or size of any ground mounted solar facility or energy storage facility until such time that the total area under panel within the locality exceeds four percent of the total area within the locality, or two, any prohibitions on the use of solar panels that comply with generally accepted National Environmental Protection and Product Safety standards, provided that such installation is in compliance with any provision of a local ordinance that establishes criteria and requirements for siting. There, so there were quite a few problems with that provision. It didn't require a locality to, it specifically said, nothing in this subsection shall require a locale, locality to approve an application for solar or energy storage projects, or limit a locality's authority to establish criteria and requirements for siting, including those related to tree canopy and stormwater management that are otherwise in compliance with this subsection. Um, but I had a lot of questions about it. Basically, you know, can't limit the amount, density, or size, which to me is problematic because even by saying you can have it in this zoning district, but not in this zoning district, would limit the, the, the amount. Um, so that seemed problematic to me. We had some localities that brought up the fact that, uh, the, the proposed legislation would not apply to, let's see. Yeah, the provision of, of this subsection shall not apply to any site that was a subject of an application submitted to the locality before July one, twenty twenty four. So, some localities wondered whether or not any of the solar projects, the percentage that they were already at, would that be wiped out, so you couldn't take in account existing percentage of land area that were permitted prior to July one of twenty twenty four? Um, and so whether or not the four percent land area would be additive on top of what they've already permitted. Yeah, so, not sure where these are going to go, I would tell you, um, VECO is doing a lot of, a lot of work, to support localities and counties, um, with regard to this legislation. I actually just, um, recorded a webinar for them, with them, on these exact topics that should be out shortly. Just a series of videos that talk about some of these issues and kind of the legislative, um, landscape and, and where things might be going.
Our closest devotee.
What's that?
Our closest devotee.
So, um, they did vote. So, they, they were both tabled in committee, and I think, I, I can only tell you that on SB six ninety seven, but, oh, I take that back. Will you bear with me one second, because SB six ninety seven did come out of the House. So. SB six ninety seven passed the House, um, or excuse me, passed the Senate with a twenty one yes to eighteen no vote. And then it went over to the House, and that's where it was basically tabled. I'm not sure if the vote was unanimous to table it, um, until next session, um, but it was tabled nonetheless.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so ultimately the vote out of the Senate was, was close, twenty one to eighteen.
That will be coming back up again.
That is my understanding, and, and I'm sure it'll evolve. That is my understanding and, and I'm sure it'll evolve. To some degree.
All aboard. Speak to your legislators. I can hear your voice. That's what I've been telling everybody, so. I went back and while you were talking, I was thinking about. The resolution, um, we were talking about the solar, we brought up that four percent, make me think. Resolution talks about establishing acreage limitation. For the utility scale solar. We haven't discussed that tonight, I know we did. And I know there's a maximum project area that we have, um, and three point four, point three point one under location. Yeah, setback standards, Mitchell and setback standards. B talks about the large scale solar facility shall be submitted to the following location, Mitchell and setback standards. One being the maximum project area of the solar facility shall be five hundred acres. And the project may not exceed sixty-five percent of the total acreage project, which we discussed last week or whenever that was. But with this, I, I think they wanted us to establish an acreage limitation.
That's what I understood, okay.
So.
Yeah, and. Sorry, there's a separate provision under three dash one four point three, point four, point five for density.
Thank you.
Um, which is that three percent of the land area in any given five mile radius. But it, it, I, I do recall some of the discussion was suggesting, should there be a. Just a maximum acreage limit, aggregate acreage limit for all projects within the county.
That's what I understood.
That's kind of the way I took it, I know we, I know you read this. But I believe in the very end, I believe the motion was that we were to cap it. Acreage wise.
Would that mean something like no more than fifty percent of the land area of the county could be considered? But we already have a cap with the two mile limit.
So let's play this out, um. We've got, uh, a map with the transmission lines, correct, Michael?
Yeah.
So we've got that threshold that it can't be but two miles, one mile from the town, two mile or five miles from each other.
Two miles from the transmission line.
Right. They can. And I know there's been push from outside entities wanting us to do shared solar. Shared solar does not have to, have to tie into the transmission line, it can go into the distribution line, correct, sir?
That's correct.
So it could just be about anywhere. Where there's a distribution line. Um, and we've not discussed the shared solar. So I just wanted to make sure that we give it that some thought. Because they're, they're, they're wanting us to consider shared solar because otherwise they would have to go through the special use permit process. And, um. Technically be limited to those areas of transmission lines. Is that the way I understand that, Michael?
Yes.
So you kind of secluded to that area on that policy now. Those transmission lines are between here and Baywood. And, and Breeze and Galax, so.
It's a very limited.
You're looking at utility scale solar from this end of town to Galax and Breeze.
That's a very limited area of the county.
So is that considered your cap?
In my mind, that's a cap, there's a map that shows that. That area, yeah, there we go. Very, very limited area of the county.
And it could be no more than five hundred acres. How's Commissioner Shill about that? Have we done what they have asked us to do?
As long as we don't go to shared solar. What does that look like as a percentage of the county?
We've not technically defined the cap, we haven't. But it is a cap. It is, but I think what they're, they were looking for is something more specific or more definitive. I mean, although we've, although we've got it covered, they were wanting to spell out some.
Well, we can say, well, the cap's fifty percent of the county, but in reality, it's, it's on that map back there, which might be. Ten percent or twenty percent. Maybe we need clarification from the supervisor.
So I, I will tell you. I know there's probably a couple of localities we work with that have a, a, a cap, a specific cap. So Brunswick County indicates that, and this is in their ordinance. The maximum total acreage of land in Brunswick County to be under PV panel coverage for both cooperative scale. Which is shared solar and utility scale is eighty-six hundred acres. The maximum total acreage of PV panel coverage for all cooperative scale facilities is one hundred acres cumulatively. And the maximum total acreage of PV panel coverage for utility scale is eighty-five hundred acres cumulatively. So they have hundred acre reserve or community scale shared solar. And the eighty-five hundred reserved for utility scale solar. Not. Not a hundred percent certain. How, whether or not they can reach that cap. With projects that met all of the other requirements. But I can tell you that they had a, a number, like eight applications waiting to come in the door when they were working on this ordinance. And at, at one point, they had more applications than a more. Way of the area than they had. Allowed under their ordinance, to the degree that they actually went back. And amended their ordinance to redefine how they were calculating the area that fed into that cap.
So I was gonna ask, how did they determine the eighty-five hundred acres?
I do think it's tied to a percentage of the county land area. But I don't know that definitively.
Two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Do you remember, I was gonna say, you're the one that should have.
Two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Two hundred eighty-five thousand sounds about right.
Acres.
Acres. But that does, does that include? The national forests and state.
It does include the national forest.
I don't think it does. It's in our comprehensive plan.
So that number for the, that works out to approximately two point. Two point four, two and a half percent of the total land area in the county, for, for Brunswick County.
Well, I understood them to say they wanted a flat cap. Commissioner wants thoughts. I think the major supervisor requirement, we have to come up with a flat cap. Well, you said, yeah.
What'd you say?
He said, uh, I said, yeah.
I thought you'd give your.
So we're just gonna go based on the percentage of.
What's two, what's two percent? The acreage of the county.
What'd you say? Twenty, twenty-eight?
Two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Two hundred eighty-five thousand, sorry. I have that number, hard number.
Hundred acres, two percent.
Two percent.
Well, there's a lot of the county.
It ain't a thousand acres, it's suitable for it, but I mean.
A lot of the county's just not suitable. Charlie's, Charlie's forty acres out here is good.
Just let all my money run into the camp.
Yep.
I guess, I guess my acreage is probably suitable.
You got brains too. Sheep, you goats, cows out there with it?
Can't grow corn over there.
I have, I have a bad experience.
We won't get one, I was thirteen, I don't care.
Give us a number.
Commissioner, what do you think? You said two percent was how much?
Fifty-seven.
It's seven hundred acres. Is there a figure for, uh? Farmland or land or, uh?
Right, it wasn't taken for standard.
Percent of that. Well, it's one percent.
Says excluding pasture, this is in our comprehensive plan.
Are you, okay. Data's coming up for the.
Excluding pasture, Grayson has over nineteen thousand of acres, nineteen thousand acres of hay and haylage product, production with an annual yield. Of forty-five thousand dry tons of equivalent value, it's over three million. So that's nineteen thousand. Corn and silage encompassing about one thousand one hundred acres resulting in about twenty thousand tons of dairy and beef cattle forage. Value of close to one million.
So if you're looking at nineteen thousand, around twenty thousand acres.
Twenty-one thousand acres. So it's two percent, twenty-one thousand acres. Fourteen thousand.
You all may have arrived at this, but two percent of the land area of the county would be five thousand seven hundred and eight acres.
Right.
So now they're looking at. Two percent of twenty-one thousand based on.
Gotcha.
Based on. I, I believe what they're basing it on is the comprehensive plan. For the crops per acreage, which was nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand acres in hay and haylage and. Eleven hundred in dairy and sil, or silage and corn. Corn, silage and it was just corn.
Hate to see all that farmland, uh, become a southern county, but isn't that the landlord's choice?
I hope so, yes, and that they get a good lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
Think we're better off leaving it with the two mile. Two mile within the transmission line.
Well, that's what we thought all along, but.
Yeah.
It's not what we were.
I'm unfortunate that they put on.
It's, it's true, right.
Like the, the supervisors really seen that map?
We presented it to them.
Yeah.
And then we, and then we.
On the ground, but, yeah.
And then we make our statement that we feel this was best suited based on. And. We're not considering shared solar. This is for utility scale.
Yeah.
Based on what I read, and Michael, you can help with this. I, I know that the, um, you could buy into it. And that there are other, um, localities that were, or, excuse me, AEP or Dominion was, um. Exempting certain income brackets where they can buy into it to help their. That would be the only way that a citizen of the county could probably. Gain. From that particular type of system, but how much would it help contribute to the reduction of their electric bill?
Yeah, and, and it's important to be clear too, so. I don't, I don't know that Appalachian have their program set up yet.
I don't think so, I think it's being discussed.
Yeah, so, so Dominion's program is set up. Just because you don't have a community or shared solar facility in your locality. Does not mean that you as a Dominion rate payer couldn't sign up for that program. But the program, for the program to work, it depends on there actually being. Community and shared solar facilities. In the state that feed into that program. So. There is an interest, you know, a growing interest in having more of those facilities. Part of the problem and part of the delay about, about those facilities is that my understanding is, is that. It, it comes down to. How much they're gonna need to pay to upgrade. Back of, you know, the, the Dominion facilities that exist, whether it's distribution lines or transmission lines or substations or other equipment. That, um, needs to be updated or upgraded to ensure that that system in the grid can function properly. And. To this point. That they're, the cost of doing that have not resulted in a lot of, um, those smaller facilities coming online, mainly for Dominion. For Appalachians and AEP, it's, it's been, they, they didn't have that program capacity set up. But now it is, and so it's, you know, hypothetically, we're gonna see more interest in, you know, AEP's region for those types of facilities.
So that's the reason that Clean Footprint was pushed into the planning commission for that. One, so that they wouldn't have to go through the special use permit process. For this, for this future development out here.
What's your opinion of the countywide cap, what we have now for a flat, uh, percentage of the county?
Well, I would tell you that the, the provisions cap it by other nature, I think, you know, what. This Black said earlier is, is completely accurate. That, um. You know, the, the. Distance requirements, separation requirements. Uh, the zoning district requirements, they impose a, a cap essentially on. On areas that would be eligible to be developed. And, um. I would tell you that it. It presents, even the density limit presents a little bit of a challenge when you start to bump up against it and. Likewise, if you've got a countywide cap, it presents a little bit of a challenge when you're considering multiple applications. That it depends on the sequence if you're approving this one versus this one versus this one. You know, which one exceeds or, or where does it shut the door on other applications? And that's always problematic. And that's always problematic versus just saying, here's your application or here are several applications and do they don't, do, do they or do they not meet the regulations? And are they consistent with the policies versus a number that may or may not be grounded in, in, in anything. But the converse of that is if you have a number, you know, everyone knows what the threshold is, you know, and it's, and it's a little less theoretical to some degree. You know, you know, it's not dependent on whether or not it is or is not within a mile or two miles of, of another facility or, or the transmission line. It's you know, here's the, here's how many can fit in and that's it. So I, I can see it both ways. We generally, I, I think if I were to lean in any direction, it would not be to have a, necessarily have a density limit or a cap. It would just be to set clear standards that were based in reasonable policy, you know. Facilities shouldn't be within certain proximity to one another. They have to reasonably be located within close proximity to transmission lines so there's predictability about where they're gonna be sighted. And you're not gonna potentially lead to, you know, significant extension of transmission lines. You already have a cap on the individual size of projects. So I think, I think there's a lot of things that, you know, tools that are in the ordinance that you know, result in a reasonable limitation on the number of facilities. And if I'm wrong, then you can come back and amend it.
And that's always a possibility, yeah.
Right.
So I've, I've seen that happen numerous times. You see that on the news a lot where localities receive all these solar projects and then the board says, I don't think we need anymore and they go back and completely cap it. So that's always doable.
Commission, good with that? Does that leave it like it is?
That leaves it like it is. I'm good with that. And that it seems like the county is better covered as far as our residents and everyone, the way we have it versus putting a specific number. So I think it gives us more flexibility.
No, haven't debated it, so. You've heard the president's comments.
Right. So is anyone on the commission not good with that? Yeah, leave it be.
Michael, don't leave it like it is. And then we'll get Mountain Ridge overlay next month.
What's, what's that town over in North Carolina? Just where you look at Bannerell?
What?
You look up on that mountain, it's just apartments. Three story.
No, no, I think we, we went through the text, we went through the policy, we've made our decisions. Michael, I thank you very much for all the time and effort that you put into this, helping us navigate this process.
No, I appreciate you. Appreciate y'all, y'all.
You jumped in, went bumping here and got it to us in the Taliban. I really do appreciate that.
Thanks, thank y'all. Thank you very much. And I'll see you next week.
Yep, thank you.
Commission, we know.
My, my poker off the bell.
Yes, on that one. Mine too.
Uh, Commission, we know we're gonna be looking over a few things, getting prepared. So be ready for that. And next week, double A, right?
Next Tuesday, our public hearing. All of these proponents that we've navigated tonight will be captured. The new policy and text will be sent out to you. I'll drop them in just as soon as Michael gets them to me. And we can do a review prior to the public hearing. I just wanna mention, we have three public hearings next Tuesday night. So there'll be a lot of people here. I, I do plan to do right here, yeah. We, I'll plan to do wind and solar last. Because I, I know that it's the most conservative. But we do have the comprehensive plan. We've got a chapter seven of transportation. That'll be cut and dried because we gotta get smart scale in for Mount Phil. Then we're going to, of course, do the comprehensive plan policy for this one, but that will be separate. So we have a special use permit for campground. We'll do that first and then comprehensive plan second and wind and solar, we'll do that third. It's gonna be a long night. So eat supper before you come.
Commission, thank you each and every one for coming. Do we have a motion to this, this time? Can you have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Plan commission is this, this, this time. Thank you very much.